Good evening. It's my pleasure to call the Thursday, May 19th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing. Excellence in education is a shared responsibility in partnership with all district and community members. Whole child development is vital to our educational system. Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical, career, and social-emotional learning. And our decision-making process is student-centered, and student voice is valued.
The 2020 through 2025 district goals. Number one, social and emotional wellness: to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish. Number two, to prepare contemporary citizens, modernize and expand learning experiences, to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society. And number three, diversity and inclusion: to establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. And now the roll call?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. McKay? Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here. Ms. -- or Dr. McKay is traveling today. The next item on the agenda is the official minutes. I will accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the May 5th, 2022 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Crispin moved.
Vitale seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. And now we get to our favorite part of the agenda, all the student reports. Dr. Rucci, would you like to start?
Mrs. McGilvery is here.
Oh, Mrs. McGilvery, right, to get started with our Linwood students.
Hello. Good evening, School Board. Good evening, families and community members. I'm Gillian McGilvery. I'm the proud principal of Linwood Elementary School, and I am thrilled to be here with some wonderful student leaders. These are some of our fifth graders who've done some really, really great work at Linwood over the course of the year. They're going to share that with you tonight.
Good evening, Dr. Rucci and School Board members. I am Molly Moore, President of Linwood Student Ambassadors. The cabinet members and I, along with some Green Team representatives, are here today to tell you about what we've been up to at Linwood this year. In the past, two students from each class in fourth and fifth grade were selected to be in the student ambassadors, which led to few committees and teachers doing most of the work. This year, however, in fifth grade, the fifth grade students were selected to be committee leaders, and any fifth or fourth graders were allowed to join any committee they had interest in. This created much more of a -- much more student involvement and allowed for a greater number of students to participate in school. The purpose of Linwood Student Ambassadors is to help students have more of a say in what happens in our school and give students leadership opportunities. Our main goals this year were to get a gaga-ball pit for our recess yard and help with the Super Bowl of Caring fundraiser. We have successfully met our goals, and we hope to continue to make Linwood and Havertown a better place. Now I'll hand it over to the Vice President.
Hello, my name is Emily Roach, and I'm the Vice President. Part of my leadership is to lead the Bigs and Littles Committee. Bigs and Littles is an activity our school does where younger kids will hang out with older kids and do fun activities. They will do this for about 30 minutes once a month. Our committee plans what they will be doing, and they will make sure everything works out and that they have fun. Thank you for your time, and next up is our school treasurer.
Hi, my name is Emily Kaptire, and I'm in the fundraising committee. We help donate for the Super Bowl of Caring. The Super Bowl of Caring is based on a food donation by students that -- and we give to people in need. Each student got specific food to bring -- each grade got specific food to bring in if they choose to. In the years past, it was grade against grade to win the Super Bowl. The fundraising committee came up with the idea for Slime Wars. Slime Wars was a fundraiser toward getting a gaga-ball pit. If each student chose to, they would bring in money to give to that grade's team of teachers. In the end, the fifth grade teachers and our principal, Ms. McGilvery, won this -- won and got slimed with real slime. The extra money that we got, some will be added to the student ambassador budget and will be donated to the children of Ukraine. The student ambassador budget is extra money that we keep to use for things like Bigs and Littles, arts and crafts. Next up is the inclusion coordinator.
Hi, I'm Allison Cannon, and I'm the inclusion coordinator. Things we did this year was we delivered boxes full of supplies to kids who were new to the school this year. We collected posters of some Linwood Lions family traditions, and we hung up posters all around the school with kindness quotes. Now I'm passing this off to the historian.
Good evening. I'm Jane Deal, and I'm the leader of the historian committee. I have 10 people in my group, including me. In my committee, we take pictures of classes in each specific grade for our group. We have a max of four people per group. My committee and I, we take photos of the kids from kindergarten to fifth grade. My committee and I work together and then separate into groups to take the best photos possible. We take photos of special events or dates and head to every classroom. We take the pictures that we have got and put them in the yearbook. Now on to public relations.
My name is Graham Rizzo, and I'm in charge of the public relation committee. Our committee is on the morning announcements every morning around 8:47 for around one minute. We talk about the weather for the day, the sports updates that will happen that day, jokes, and more interesting facts. We spread the joy and lighten up the day. Here is the art director.
Hello, my name is Stone, and I'm the art director. This is what the art committee has done so far. We have made a Linwood pride sign. We have encouraging posters around the school, and we have photo booth props for literacy night. Another bonus is that we have safety posters around the school so people know how to be safe. Next up is the Green Team.
Hi, everybody. I am Elsa Jansen.
I'm Carly O'Hara.
We are on the Green Team.
On the screen, you can see what the Green -- what the Green Team is and what we've done. We held a -- we had a campus cleanup where all the grades cleaned up our playground and fields.
The Green Team made posters for the younger grades so they could understand recycling versus trash. We had a walk or bike the school day. It was so successful that they had to park their bikes on the light post because the bike rack was so full. Now we're going to hand it off to the safety committee.
Director.
Hi, my name is Gracie Hoben, and I'm the leader of the safety committee this year. We have fourth and fifth grader safety committee members in the hallway in the morning and afternoons to encourage students to follow expected behaviors. I had meetings with staff members to organize safety committee members on the buses. We also visited morning meetings to talk about what staff behaviors look like. We collaborated with the art committee to create posters for the hallway encouraging safe behaviors. Finally, we collaborated with the PR committee to have safety reminders on the morning announcements. Now I will pass it on to the recess director.
Hi, my name is Delaney Keenan, and I'm the leader of the recess committee. This year, our committee made videos demonstrating how to use the new recess equipment safely. We also worked with the fundraising committee to raise enough money to have a gaga-ball pit at school. Finally, our fifth graders participated in a basketball game against the Linwood staff.
What we learned about our leadership from this experience is that anyone can be a leader as long as they're determined and willing to put in the hard work and effort.
What we learned about working in a group is that you don't have to do everything yourself. A good team works together well and makes the job fun.
In the future, we hope to be leaders in our jobs such as doctors, presidents, sports, players, coaches, teachers, actors, and much more.
Thank you. As you can see, we have a very, very strong group of leaders here. Mr. Haran, they are ready for you, ready for the middle school. They're going to continue to do great things. We've had so much fun together at Linwood with the different activities and special events they've planned, and they're just a wonderful, wonderful group of students. So thank you for having us here tonight to share.
I'd just like to say that it sounds like your committees are a lot more fun than our board committees. And maybe somebody -- maybe you could talk to me about the green slime thing, because I think we could.
There's a lot of slime. If you were somebody who poured slime on a teacher's or a principal's head, raise your hand. It was a great day at Linwood.
That's a lot of slime.
I know. I just want to say, as someone who has a second grader at Linwood, I think it's amazing, all the fun stuff that you guys have put together for the students. My second grader loves it. And Graham, when you were saying the announcements, you share interesting information, all your sports information that you share. My little guy comes home, and sometimes he'll be like, "When is that Sixers game on tonight?" And before we even ask Alexa, he'll be like, "Oh, yeah, the morning announcements. They told me. It's 6:45." He knows. He loves it. So you guys are doing an awesome job. Thank you. Fun question. So I don't know what gaga-ball is or gaga-ball pit is, and I--
It's a big deal.
I understand. And I don't just try to figure it out, but is Linwood not the first school that has said gaga-ball pits?
We're going to say yes. We think yes. These students have worked so hard, and all kindergarten through fifth graders have worked for it. And they had some setbacks, just like when ordering anything right now. It was a little delayed. They had to change courses. They had to gather together and select a different model than the one that they chose. But they were very determined to have it installed while they were still fifth graders so that they could play with it. So it happened a couple weeks ago. It's been great.
Well done. Thank you. And then you might want to stick around for just a couple things. We'll have the middle school and the high school report after we recognize our student representatives for the board. But then after that, I'll be sure to make sure you will all be invited to exit if you want to not stick around for the rest of the business portion.
Right before all those committee reports that some of us are bored by.
Thanks, Mrs. Wedeman. Well, it's that time of the year again where we are recognizing our students who have dedicated so much of their time all throughout the school year for the purpose of keeping the board informed of the many different happenings that are occurring all throughout the schools that they attend. And they cover not just what they themselves are interested and participate in, but they find out a lot of other things that are happening in the schools. As I said, share that information with us tonight, each evening. So tonight, we want to recognize their dedication and express our appreciation for the time that they have spent here with us. And they've been able to do this amidst all of the other activities that they are involved in. Our first student that we're going to recognize from the middle school, Ian Slavich. And Ian, not only is he our board reporter, but as an eighth-grade student, he's very involved with the unified sports, basketball and handball. He's an active Boy Scout. We saw him very interested attend most of the day of the bus rodeo down at our transportation garage, and I know that the drivers appreciated having you there cheering them on. So Ian, on behalf of the board, I would like to say thank you for the time that you've spent and the reporting that you have delivered so nicely.
Anytime.
All right. Ms. Wedeman, Mr. Feinberg, do you want to come up and we'll start to get a picture? Isabella Casado also attends our board meetings, keeping us informed amidst all of her activities as an eighth-grade student. She is part of the Heritage Appreciation Club. She's a member of the cheerleading squad, the lacrosse team, and we, again, appreciate all of the time that Isabella spends out here with us. She -- there you go. I can't really see. I'm not real tall myself, so I -- You're very welcome. Thank you. Seventh-grade student Liam Pinder, in addition to being a board representative, is a member of the soccer team, the wrestling team. He clearly enjoys chess. He's part of the chess club, and vice president of the Best Buddies Club at the middle school. So Liam, thank you for fitting us in among all of the activities. Bianca Salerno is a sixth-grade student who has fit us in among her activities of being peer assistance group, a member of the chorus, member of chamber choir. She's an actor, an acting, a dancer. She plays the piano, and we've often said we could learn a little bit of public speaking when she starts. So thank you for, again, fitting us in among your busy schedule. And these are the individuals, the young people who have served in the capacity of School Board representative for the 22 -- 21-22 school year. We also have two students from our high school who regularly attend our board meetings and, again, keep us up to date on all of the happenings at the high school, which we can see, hear from them every time they report, is an extremely busy place to report upon. So in addition to reporting on activities that they themselves may be involved in, they are also actively finding out what else, again, is taking place throughout the school. They've got many activities that they are involved in themselves, as recent as yesterday. I saw Mia at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for a student forum, participating in that as well. So there's a lot that our students are involved in and continue to be involved in. We're hopeful that we will have our high school students back with us in some capacity, but for now, we want to thank Amelia Gonzalez for joining us and reporting. And Mia Diwall. And now we will hear from those student reporters.
And we will start with our middle school student reporter tonight, Bianca Salerno.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bianca Salerno, and I'm so happy to be here tonight. I'm on what some might call an adrenaline rush and some might call flat-out craziness because I just sprinted here from the sixth-grade spring concert, where I was so grateful to have a solo in. The concert ended at 7:29, and this started at 7:30, so you can imagine my dilemma. Time to shake off those jitters and get right into this. Everyone in chorus is so talented, and we're so lucky for our incredible Mrs. Langley and the whole musical staff. It wouldn't be the end of the year at HMS without Potter Cup. I can still hear the cheers of HMS students for our teams and the screaming of our favorite songs at the DJ booth. Two Really Is Better Than One when HMS united with Paxton Hollow Middle School to raise money for Alex's lemonade stand. Even though it's completely, entirely, 100% about the fun of it, HMS did win this year. One of the many things I love about our school is the opportunity for everyone to make a difference and be a part of something. That's why the Peer Assistance Group, PAG, was recognized by the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for the Making a Difference Award. PAG has always been so special to me, and I have so much fun interacting with all my friends and learning about each other. It seems as if just yesterday, I was at this meeting telling all of you about how we can't wait for Camp Canidensis coming up in the future. But now it's really here. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grades will be riding up to Camp Canidensis on separate days. The sixth-grade trip is in 11 days and 11 hours, but who's counting? Definitely not me. The season of giving is truly all year round because we are collecting new and gently-used middle school-sized clothing for cradles to crayons during the week of May 23rd, with a Saturday, May 28th drop-off time as well. And we can't forget about the district art show that is scheduled from May 24th to 26th and will be held at Haverford Middle School in Jim D. All the paint-stained clothing of students will finally pay off when you see all the hard work grades K to 12 put in their art. It is our great pride and honor that our Seventh Heaven Choir Ensemble will be performing the National Anthem at the Phillies game on Tuesday. the National Anthem at the Phillies game on Tuesday, May 31st. As a person who aspires to be in Seventh Heaven next year, I'm so proud of this accomplishment and we can't wait to see them shine. As the school year takes its final stretch, a lot will be happening to ensure maximum learning and fun are locked into our memories to look back on during summer, especially for eighth grade, which will be moving up to the trusted hands of Haverford High School in ninth grade. Middle school is a huge part of youth and we will be celebrating all of these eighth graders who've worked so hard with a dance, honors night, and clapout. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today and all the previous times as well. Enjoy the rest of your night and go forwards.
And our high school student reporter tonight is Mia DiWol.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia DiWol and I thank you for allowing me to present on behalf of the high school tonight. It has been a busy week for students. AP testing wrapped up last week and although it isn't my favorite time of year, teachers prepared me very well and I'm eagerly awaiting receiving my scores in July. Underclassmen began their keystones for algebra, English, and biology earlier this week. With under a month left to school, students have definitely been working harder than ever. This past Tuesday was the annual senior breakfast where seniors were given a chance to celebrate their hard work and begin some of the end of year festivities. Next Friday will be a half day in which students will participate in a new wellness block, giving students time to unwind and practice some mindfulness while spending time with the teacher of their choice. During this time, I will be going to visit my English teacher from my freshman year for some coloring, which I'm honestly very excited for. This past weekend, Haverford Science Academy held their annual Discover Day and hosted elementary students for some exciting science demonstrations and interactive activities. The Drama Club's production of Mama Mia concluded with a bang and after being nominated for 15 Cappys Awards, Caleb Schmidt and the Haverford Orchestral Pit successfully won an award for best pit performance. Congratulations to them. The Haverford orchestras came together for the first time in two years to perform at String Night just last night and concluded with a joint finale in which middle school and high school students played together. I remember participating in this when I was in middle school and it was truly surreal to be on the other side of this experience, especially with this being Mr. Brennan's last concert. Best Buddies will also be holding their annual rain rally tomorrow with the help of our wonderful fire department to support the Unified Bocce and Track Teams. I had the privilege of attending the Delaware County Student Forums event, Delco under construction at the DCIU yesterday, as Dr. Ruscie said, and to say it was informative would be an understatement. Over the course of a few hours, I attended numerous presentations led by students and administrators discussing the importance of topics such as mental health, dignity, and the environment in the school place. During this time, I was also able to watch a presentation given by Haverford's own Mr. Smith as he talked about the importance of representation in the educational field. Haverford's athletes have not shown any signs of slowing down as the boys' lacrosse and volleyball teams play playoff games earlier this week. Senior nights are once again a reminder of how quickly time is flying by with softball and lacrosse having theirs earlier this month. Aubrey Leno Weaver recently broke down Don Burl's county record in the 300 hurdles in the track and field world. Softball player Emma Taylor was also admitted to the PA Sports Hall of Fame in the Delco chapter earlier this week. Congratulations to them both for making Haverford proud. The girls' softball team will begin their playoff tournament next week in an attempt to make it back to state finals at Penn State this year. As months breeze by and finals are the last hurdle left in the school year, students will keep up the hard work in the classroom and on the field. Thank you again for allowing me time to speak tonight.
We are now moving into the more business part of our agenda with Dr. Ruscie's superintendent report, but if you would like to exit now, you're welcome to do so.
I won't take any offense.
Thank you for coming.
Bye, thank you.
Well done, guys.
Thank you for bringing your children here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Great job, Emma. Great job, Jane. Good job, guys.
Thank you. Thanks so, thanks so much for coming tonight.
Good job. Heard you won big last night.
And it looks like we'll have a little more room on this side of the, of the meeting room if people want to move in and spread out.
Oh, you can. I'm, I'm all right with you. Brief enough.
All right. Dr. Ruscie, time for your remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Wedeman. And I'm going to get right into the two items listed below, superintendent's comments, first being the discussion of the revisions to the Health and, Health and Safety Plan. When we last updated, brought forth an updated plan to the board, it was at a point in time before the CDC had changed their metrics to what they are now terming community levels. They have moved away from looking at positivity rate as a sole descriptor of, you know, when levels to indicate when masks would be recommended, highly recommended when masking would, would be required. Within our original plan, which was based off of the Pennsylvania Department of Health Guidance and designed as a way to prevent a possible school closure based on that guidance, we looked at setting up a 3% threshold if the 3% of the total building population, that would include the students and the staff members in the building. If the building reached a 3% threshold for a period of seven days, then we would move back to masking required. But we are no longer operating under that guidance as the Pennsylvania Department of Health has informed us that they are now aligned with and following the new CDC guidance. So the change that we are proposing tonight, which by the way, our current Health and Safety Plan runs through June 30th of 2022. So any discussion that we have about this plan tonight, a future vote to make a change in this plan impacts a time period from now until June 30th. What will be required in terms of a Health and Safety Plan for the 22, 23 school year has yet to be determined and communicated to us. We do believe that we will need a plan, that one will be required, but the elements of that plan have not been communicated at this point in time. So I can't stress enough that what we are talking about now impacts between this point in time or when a vote would be taken and June 30th, 2022. There is nothing that we are deciding now that will have any impact upon the opening of the 22, 23 school year. The CDC has, has moved to something that they are describing and they have titled "Community Levels" because the belief that, that to help communities look at the prevention steps that would be taken based upon hospital admissions, the, a population within a certain community, the rate of cases within that community. So they're not just looking at the number of positive cases, but what is the implication in terms of hospitalizations, something that we have no way of, of calculating. We need to rely on an outside source for that information. And the model that we're working with now, we're doing our calculations based on counts of what is, you know, what's reported to us in terms of positive cases. So we're using a model that essentially is outdated in terms of looking at the positivity instead of looking at what has now been termed "Community Levels." The CDC does state that when you get to that highest community level, that there is the recommendation that people would be wearing masks indoors. But right now, Delaware County is at, even as recent as today, if you look at the CDC website, Delaware County, the community level is identified as low. So our recommendation is that would be that we would revise that plan accordingly, align it to community levels and move away from that 3% as our barometer to decide when people are wearing masks. We can still, you know, encourage people to wear masks. We certainly would not tell people to, to stop wearing masks. They can choose to wear a mask, but we would stop that calculation of the percentage each and every day based on the cases that are reported to us. That's the only change that we are proposing to make to the plan. There's really no need to propose any other change, given that we don't know what will be required moving forward and this is a plan that sunsets, so to speak, on June 30th. So our next proposal to you tonight is that we would have, that's Tuesday, May 24th, not Thursday, that we would have, that's all right, we would have a special meeting so that we not wait. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is June 2nd. And given the proximity to the close of the school year, we would ask that the board would meet on Tuesday, May 24th. We can have a special meeting that would be scheduled at, at 6:30. That would be, the special meeting would be for the purpose of taking the vote on the recommended change to the 21, as their Health and Safety Plan that runs through June 30th of 2022. Questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I do have a question.
Dr. King?
Go ahead. So, Dr. Ruscie, can you clarify what would be the, our plan for a school where we're noticing an increase in numbers, whether it's a specific classroom where we're seeing an increase in positive cases or just a school, particular school that we're seeing an increase in positive COVID cases?
If the board wishes for us to keep a dashboard, we would keep a dashboard that would identify the case count each one of those days. We would stop the calculation that we're now conducting, looking at seven days, what is the percentage of that number based on the total enrollment and a number of adults working in that building. So we can still put what are the number of cases and, you know, encourage people to monitor that, but we would not be mandating at any time that people would return to masks.
Would there still be, would, would there be notifications sent for, for schools that did have a spike?
We'd have to decide what the threshold, like what's the threshold if we're going to send a note, you know, a notification. We can do things like asking principals in the communication that they send out to remind people, you know, the dashboard is there, you can, you know, take a look, the dashboard is updated each day with the count, that people can take a look at that and, and see the count. I'm just, you know, processing it in my mind, what would, what would the barometer be to say now you should pay attention to it, whereas last week, we didn't tell you to pay attention to it.
Could the threshold for notification be 3%?
Well, it could be anything that we want it to be. I was trying, I'm trying to move away from conducting a calculation that right now we are the only ones using that. There's no health authority looking at the percentage of people who occupy a building and the percentage of people and what the number is of people who test positive and report it.
So I guess what I'm wondering is, thinking about the impact, like the whole point of the Health and Safety Plan, as I've said before, is to keep students and teachers and staff safe and in person, you know, receiving in-person education, in-person schooling. So I guess my concern would be, you know, do we still have the same protocols? Like if a student tests positive or a teacher tests positive, are they out for, you know, X number of days still? Is that going to start impacting? Like what are their options for receiving? I mean, are, are kids completely out of school during that time?
No, they're out for five, they are, if they test positive, they're out for five days.
And there's no virtual, no hybrid, no, I mean, I guess I'm trying to reconcile like these levels and then also like the level and quality of education that students are still able to receive. Because I think if we are approaching 3% or higher of positivity rates in our schools or classrooms, like we're just, it's going to really impact kids' education.
We would still look at, as we do any communicable disease. So something like Wubinkoff is considered a communicable disease and that we reach out to the health department and they would guide us in terms of send a letter, you know, we've all gotten the Lice Letter as parents, you know, like send a letter to the classroom or send a letter to the school or no, you don't have to send a letter based on, you know, it's just one, one case that you have. So we would still do that type of outreach for a, you know, communicable type disease. I would also say that if we're finding that the 3%, even now, if we found the 3% of preponderance of that was in one classroom, one elementary classroom that you, you know, would have right now, the number is, you know, in one of the buildings is up over 20 students, if that like was all within one classroom or one grade level, we would be communicating that, but we would communicate it because it's contained within that particular room or that particular grade level. So those, I'm not suggesting that we walk away from this altogether, but I am recommending that we stop this calculation and using that number as everybody in the building must wear, must wear a mask.
Just want to add, I, I really appreciate this move, you know, throughout the past two years, a lot of times we haven't had such guidance. And so we do, we have the guidance now from our national health authority who is telling us, this is, this is sort of what has turned into be important. And so, you know, looking at case counts, I think at one time was really, really important. That's what we had to go off of and that's, that's what, you know, was the biggest indicator of the threat level. And I think moving towards, again, what has been recommended by the health authority would, would keep us focused on what actually is, would, would be an indicator of a potential threat level. And so I think that that just puts it in line and hopefully helps folks understand what they need to be looking for, for their own calculation of whether they want to be, you know, wearing the mask or, or, you know, what, what they want to do. So I really appreciate this change and, you know, it's a shame that it happened after our previous vote. You know, I think we saw that happen a lot during the pandemic, but I think moving towards what has been recommended by our health officials is the right move.
I also agree with what Anshuwanet just said. I think this is the right move to move, to go in this direction following the guidance of the CDC. And now, as Anshuwanet said before, it was more about case counts. Now I think seeing how the virus has changed, looking at hospitalizations, that seems to make a lot more sense. I do think maybe keeping the dashboard, because there are going to be some families who do want that information, makes sense and that would be my only recommendation.
Also, just looking at the way this is reading, I'm looking where the changes in the document. I'm not sure if I'm, this might just be the way I'm reading it, but it doesn't quite, it's not quite clear. It feels like there is the actual, the way we're going to now go about things based on the CDC guidance and then after that comes the, the way that we should be determining how we're going to be looking at CDC guidance. I feel like the order is out of whack there. Like I feel like the, per the CDC update, March 24th, and then that first paragraph, during times when the CDC COVID blah, 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 that would come after that paragraph. It's like based on this, you know, this updated guidance, you know, we will do this during times and look at community levels. Just so it reads more clearly.
We can make that change.
I'm wondering if there could be a notification when, if we, if our community level does change to go into the high level. The, the CDC website is a little bit wonky and I mean, you have to, I don't know, maybe it's because I was looking at it on my phone today, but I also checked today, you know, looking at the agenda that this was on it. And, and we are in a, a low community transmission level, but I'm not sure that everyone would be following it enough to know. And so, you know, if, because that would change, you know, it would now be highly recommended in our schools. And so just to let folks know, this is per the Health and Safety Report, it's now highly recommended due to the CDC categorizing us as the high level.
Can someone else check that link? Because it actually just says that we're high and I'm not sure if I'm looking at the wrong link. It says Delaware County, Pennsylvania is in the high.
I checked it earlier today and it said low.
I know, that's what others have said, but I just, I don't, can you just click on it and double check me? I know it doesn't change what we're passing or discussing.
It does change on Thursdays is when they update it.
At 8:20?
We're getting real good now.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is, this is creepy. They're following us.
I just clicked on it and it says high. So I just, if someone else could check that.
We will.
That's what I'm seeing.
Are we at the high?
That's what it looks like.
Wow. We are at the high right now. Does anyone have a mask?
It literally went, it was low this morning when I checked. Oh, great.
Can I ask a question? The, the 5% threshold, that was by the state health department?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something we still have to do, or is that no longer a thing?
That's no, like, we don't have to, have to do that now.
Okay, so nothing happens if we get to 5% or anything, really?
No, they're not.
Okay, just curious, are we, are we also encouraging people, when we are starting to see high levels within a classroom, or within a grade level, or something, a building, are we also encouraging people to test, even if they're asymptomatic?
We have not had that yet, but, so, I would imagine that we would. I mean, I'm just looking at Nicole, but we've not had a concentrated high percentage within one particular classroom, or at one particular grade level, but.
This.
Nicole is saying it's, it's been mostly within a family.
The CDC guidance is to get tested if you have symptoms, not asymptomatic, so.
We would put, we can put some communication together if we see those percentages high, and, you know, we wouldn't ignore that, we would treat that like we do other communicable diseases, and notify people and then refer them at that time to the CDC website. We can do that.
Going back to Ms. Nagras' point, I think it would be great if, you know, we have this recommendation built in, that when we are at the high level, it is recommended to wear a mask, just, you know, that we are informing the community when the levels do change.
Yeah. Because they can change in the middle of a meeting.
Within hours.
Right.
But just for a point of clarification, so now we're all looking at the website. If this was the case, Dr. Ruscia, and I guess Thursday is the, the day where they, they updated, you're saying?
I guess.
Or is it?
Yes, no, it's, yeah.
Okay, so if this was the case, we come here, we see this, what would happen tomorrow?
Well, in the, we'll be sending communication home tomorrow anyway to notify the community of this meeting tonight and the potential of a special meeting on Tuesday, and we will include in there that, here's a link to the CDC website, we are at, you know, we are at high, so masks are highly, I would use their words, I won't use any of mine, masking is highly recommended.
So, I guess that's, that's the part of, part that I want to be clear about, so when I'm reading this, it says, in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, community level is high, wear a mask indoors. I don't see language less than missing that says highly recommended. I'm looking right underneath here, so are we saying highly recommended when it's high, or we're just saying, wear a mask when it's high? And I think we need to be very clear about whatever is being proposed for the next votes, that we're all on the same page.
Well, they're, they also do not have the word required in there, and that's what makes a difference for us.
Okay.
So we would be saying that it is highly recommended that people wear a mask indoors.
Okay.
And so this is then aligning the schools with the same advice that the CDC has for people circulating in any, any activity in society, right? That these, these are not unique to schools, nor are they unique to any other setting, this recommendation in high, to wear a mask. And I think it's also correct to say that this is the strategy that many of our neighboring districts and districts around the state have chosen to align with, given that it's matching and consistent with CDC's now current practices, and has that alignment with the recommendation for people in their daily lives in general.
Yes.
I will note that you hear on the website, it says it's updated Thursdays at 8:00 PM, so this is just, we have, for people who have been watching this, the map has changed last week, you saw more of the mediums in some of the neighboring counties and states, so it is a, you know, a way to track risks, and I think gives, you know, hopefully is, is an indicator for people who want to make decisions about masking, or about the ways that they, you know, how it's socializing and contact they have with people, they can certainly take this into account. And I think Dr. Ruscia's point about having COVID become more in the category of the other communicable diseases that schools have long dealt with, we now have a, a new health department that hopefully, you know, will be a resource and be able to advise us if there were kind of changes or, or things like that, that were a concern, and then that information can be communicated, but, you know, I think aligning it with this CDC community level, which, again, was a concept released after we last reviewed the plan, seems to make sense at this point in time.
Just really quickly add that, because we're talking about the CDC guidance, the, the main guidance that I think is coming from the CDC and really all health authorities is to be vaccinated, and if you haven't gotten your children vaccinated, or if any of your younger children have recently turned five and have become eligible for the vaccine, that's really what's going to help us the most and make this, you know, less of a threat. And I think that was part of going towards counting hospitalizations more than just counting cases, because we see that people who are vaccinated very often have less severe symptoms. So again, you know, if you're waiting, if you haven't gotten your booster, you know, please, please do that.
And related to that, are there any booster clinics or vaccination clinics coming up? I know we've hosted some in the past, but is, are there any future plans for those?
We have not been approached, nor have we reached out to anyone about the clinics.
I think vaccines are pretty available, and so, you know, hopefully, folks, you know, there is, I think, Pennsylvania website, CDC website, you can find your location for a vaccine, so you should, hopefully you should not have an issue finding one.
Right, that, when we, when the district did host vaccine clinics, that was when it was newer to be eligible for school-aged students, and so we were able to host that and support that for our school-aged students. Any other comments or discussion? All right, we will be then prepared to vote on this on Tuesday, May 24th, 6:30, a special meeting.
I guess it should be clear that our current health and safety plan, until we take that vote, remains in effect, and so if there are schools that go to the 3% level between now and Tuesday, they would, they would need to follow our current health and safety plan of masking, right?
Yes, there is, one of our buildings, the building principal did send communication to parents last evening, letting them know to continue to monitor the chart, because they, at that time, they were their third day at 3%.
And now it seems that we're in high, so we should also be recommending broadly masking, because that's the level that our community is at, figures that there's all these changes, right?
Mid, literally.
Okay, to move on?
Yes, great.
All right. The second item that I wish to share with you this evening as an information, as an information item, not for a vote tonight, we would bring it forward at another time, the June 2nd meeting for a vote, this is the calendar for the academic year 2023, 2024. Just for the benefit of the public, the 2022, 2023 calendar, that's already been approved, that's next school year's calendar, so that is on the website already. This would be for the following school year. A few things to point out there, the first day of school for students would be Tuesday, September 5th. We also identify dates on which our facilities would not be available in the evening and observance of holidays or the day itself, when the holiday is being observed, that is identified on the calendar. Also, usually of high interest, the spring break week, we have been able to identify the Monday after spring break as an in-service day for teachers, so that means that the children would not be in school. That is April Fool's Day for, in April of 2024. But, you know, the most important target that we do look at here is the, what is the last student day, and in 2024, June 14th, which is a Friday, would be the last student day. One of our goals is always to end on either a Thursday or Friday and not have kids having to come in for one or two days that follow, that following week. Give families the opportunity to get a clean start on these, on the summer. Also of note, in, usually there's a day in May for the primary, in 2024, that is not in May, that's actually an April date, so that's why you will see April 23rd, which is a Tuesday, identified as an in-service day, so students would not be in the building during the voting on that, that particular year.
That's a bigger election that day.
Yes, yes.
Election Day in November, looks like it's also, the building is closed, November 7th, 2023.
Yes, the building is closed that day.
For to students.
Students, it is an in-service day.
Thank you for noting about the election day in May, because I looked on the calendar and I thought, oh, we're not having that, and having just gone through, not a big fan of students being in school, especially at Linwood, with, you know, the children in the building and people being able to enter, and apparently, you know, caused a lot of issues with people trying to access, even when they were voting, with the caf, with the cafeteria becoming the voting center. I think someone tried to drive down during the day onto the blacktop when children were still there to park, who needed easier access, because it's not really easy for people to, older people, people with disabilities, to walk from the top parking spaces all the way down, and I believe someone tried to park when the children were still there, going right down onto the blacktop, so I appreciate the children having the day off that day, that makes a lot of sense, so thank you for clarifying that.
So we will bring this, you know, if there's any more feedback, as you take a look at it, please let our board leadership know, and we will bring this back for a vote at the June 2nd meeting.
Okay. Sorry, just a question about the, I guess, the Easter Monday, April 1st, so are teachers, are they required to attend those days? I'm just thinking if people have vacations, like, some teachers might extend their vacation.
Yet to be determined, because we do have an element where some of our professional development is what's described as flex.
Okay.
So teachers can participate in professional development for a number of hours after school, sometimes, depending on what they're doing, even full-day things on a Saturday, some have, have been able to do that, and then that counts towards a flex day. So the flex day, which in-service days will be complex days, have not been decided yet.
Thank you.
All right, and then we'll have to just get our heads around 23, 24.
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the first public comment period, we had nobody signed up for that discussion, so we will go next to our board reports, beginning with the Facility and Finance Committee report from Dave Schwartz.
Okay, thanks. So a couple of, of items on the, on the Facility and Finance agenda, the first one, our construction, our construction updates on the schools, now I'll keep it pretty short. Linwood is almost done, a few, a few things still remaining, removing a few items, seating, we're still waiting on the fencing, supply chain issues, but that is on its way. High School Phase 1 is also undergoing the kind of final phases, final inspections, cleanup, those kinds of things. High School Phase 2 is ramping up right now, the interior being started, I believe the roof is, is, is up now, so those things are, are, are ongoing. Couple of items are coming up for change orders, some of the larger items that have been, that the board has been briefed upon earlier. Chatham Park and Cooper Town are also both just starting right now, some of the second shift work is being done now, that's going to get started in earnest once the school year ends. And that's pretty much the update for the, for, for the schools. Also was an update on some of the bid results and some of the, and some of the, some of the things associated with the M&amp;T lot. The, the maintenance and transportation lot is being redone this year, it's a long time coming, I guess COVID kind of put the brakes on that for a bit, but, but, but we are now looking to redo that, a lot of bids were received, if you're interested in looking at those, those are on the Facility and Finance Committee meeting minutes. And the final item that was discussed was a food service procurement review by the state. The state decided to give us a review during COVID, while we had just changed our food service providers and changed our business manager. So they had a couple of suggestions of some, some corrective actions that we'll, that we'll take regarding invoice, and, and reporting, that is underway to, to be corrected, a couple of additional recommendations were also made as well, those are also being reviewed as of right now. And if you want more information on any of the construction updates or M&amp;T paving, it's up on the website.
Thank you. The next committee report is the Policy Committee with Anshuwanet Nagras.
Great, thank you. We had a great Policy Committee meeting this past Monday, we had a very ambitious agenda, because, again, we're doing a policy audit where over approximately five years, we look at all of our policies. So we started the audit in January of this year, we have been systematically looking at them, sort of by group, and right now, we are in the community section, looking at items like communication with the community, and really how the community interacts with the district. Several of the policies that we reviewed had, had been discussed in committee before, and we were trying to sort of complete those items, and then also keep up with our ambitious policy schedule, to be able to review all of our policies within our timeline. Just so folks know, this, I don't think the board, at least in the last 20-some years, has had a policy audit, and so several of our policies are very outdated. We had, it looks like there was a big policy review in 2010, because, or at least a lot of the policies are from 2010, and then we also have a lot from 1999, so it's definitely timely, and that we're doing this. We first discussed two policies that we had reviewed before in the committee, 919 Civility and 920 Communications. The committee discussed the 919 proposed policy, which is not a current policy of ours, and came to the conclusion that it's not something that the district needs. We have very good policies on other prohibited behavior that we felt, the policy committee felt, would be able to be used in any scenario that we felt was egregious enough to potentially implicate that proposed policy. So we will not be moving forward and recommending for the board that policy. The other two policies that were from previous committee meetings, again, a proposed policy for communications, and a policy 006.1 for potentially having either virtual component of the meeting, such as one necessary, a, a member of the meeting, presenter at the meeting, participating, or for having full board meetings. We did not, unfortunately, come to a conclusion on either one of those, so those are going back to committee again. Communications will be replacing at least one of our policies, several of our policies overlapped, especially ones that had to do with the media and had to do with communications outward from the district, and so we are combining those and really just changing that policy to be more updated, more to come on that one. And then 006.1 meetings, again, the board pretty much decided that they did not want to have, well, we haven't decided, but it, there was a contingent that decided that they would not favor one single member of the board participating virtually, so again, that one's going back into committee. Two policies we also briefly discussed, 904 public attendance at school events and 906 public complaints, had become, had, had come in front of the board for a first reading before, but since the civility policy was still in committee, and it turns out, we did not pass the civility policy to recommend it for the full board, they were just to go back to committee to review based on their references to the civility policy. Just briefly, we Just briefly, we also discussed Policy 907 School Visitors, Policy 908 Relations with Parents and Guardians, and Policy 909 Municipal Government Relations. We had, the board had a lot of changes to each one of them, mostly for updating. Several of them had been, I mean, over a decade before they, since they had last been reviewed. So those were those were updates that we, I think we'll see in front of the board soon. Not at tonight's meeting, but I think we gave our solicitor some work to incorporate our comments. And the board should be seeing those soon. We only did not get to one policy on our very ambitious agenda. So I do want to thank everyone on the Policy Committee for working through that and for our president, Ms. Weedman, for giving us a cutoff to reach to so that we didn't talk all night about policies. Thanks.
Thank you. We are now in the Finance Facilities portion of the agenda, Item Six. Item A is the Bill List. I welcome a motion to approve dispersments from the following funds as listed.
Short second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill list is passed. Change Orders, Item B. I will accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc. and owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders totaling eighty-two thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-six cents as listed.
King moved.
Chrisman second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? These were all discussed at the.
These were all the aforementioned change orders that had been discussed at the facilities meeting. Some of the bigger items are the upgrading the PA system, replacing the fiber optics, all related to High School Phase Two.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a quick comment. I really like the spreadsheets that Ken Matthews has been providing on updates of all the different projects at the Finance and Facilities Meetings. I think they're really clear. And I think it's really useful information, especially to compare kind of, because we do it like every month, like month over month to see the changes from month to month. So good job, Ken. Just pass along. I appreciate a good spreadsheet. So I found that really helpful. I think it's like a relatively new way he's presenting that to us. So I like it for what that's worth.
I agree. I think it's a good way to track the progress. And then importantly, for everybody's benefit, at the bottom, it has the amount that is kind of savings, you know, that hasn't been already allocated to the budget that is still in our contingency. And if we get to the end of these projects, that becomes savings for the district to apply to other capital funds. And so that's nice and clear.
Percentage that's already billed and the percentage remaining. It's just, it's a lot of information in a compact little spreadsheet. So.
Long numbers, don't go negative. We're in good shape.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Change orders pass. Item C is a bid award for district concrete work. I will accept a motion to approve premier concrete to complete necessary concrete work around the district at the following rates.
Feinberg move.
The tally second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is bid awards for the MNT, the Maintenance and Transportation Paving Project. I welcome a motion to approve the following vendors to complete the Maintenance and Transportation Paving Project at a total cost not to exceed one million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars, inclusive of a fifty thousand dollar contingency.
Chrisman move.
The tally second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and the buses will get to sit on solid ground again. That would be nice. Item Seven is for Human Resources. Item A, Resignations. I will accept a motion to accept the following resignations as listed.
Feinberg move.
Chrisman second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is for Appointments. I will welcome a motion to approve the following appointments as listed.
Larson moved.
The tally second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointments are approved. Item C is Leave of Absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave requests.
King moved.
Chrisman second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Under Item Eight of the Agenda, Pupil Services is Item A. The 2022 ESY Extended School Year Contract Approvals. I will welcome a motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district placements for the 2022 ESY Program.
Feinberg move.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item of our agenda where we have businesses in Section 10 for Policy and Item A is to approve Policy 903 Public Participation in Board Meetings. I will accept a motion to accept changes to Policy 903 Public Participation in Board Meetings.
Snodgrass moved.
Chrisman second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
There were, I think, some changes between the last version and this one based on some comments at the last board meeting. And so I think this addresses the comments that were made to make sure that the public participation at board meetings, our policy reads the way that our practice, you know, follows. And so I think that as the board members hopefully have gotten a chance to review that the changes that were put into place do meet those requirements.
Yeah, I think it is a better reflection of our actual practices. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy is approved. Item B is now a second reading for School Board Policies 904 Public Attendance at School Events and Policy 906 Public Complaints. I will accept a motion to acknowledge the first reading of Policies 904 and 906 at the April 21st, 2022 Board Meeting and to accept the second reading of Policies 904 and 906 at tonight's meeting.
Snodgrass moved.
The tally second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just really briefly, I mentioned these in my Policy Committee Report. These were, they had come to the board for a first meeting already or for a first reading already. And then we did see that the civility policy was mentioned in these and had not also been before the board. And so the changes between the first reading and the second reading, which we have tonight, will be, they removed the language referring to the policy which the committee decided not to recommend for the full board.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Under Item 11 of the Agenda is a discussion of the Fair Funding Resolution. This is just for discussion purposes and I'll turn it over to Larry Feinberg to explain a bit about what this resolution is and how it will help.
Folks have been following meetings over the years. I know that I've raised this on several occasions just in terms of keeping the board abreast of the status of this lawsuit. It was pending for about 12 years. The suit finally got started, I guess, back in November. Testimony concluded about six weeks ago and oral arguments will start at the end of July and then it goes to a judge. I'm just going to read a couple of the statements from this proposed resolution. It's on the website if folks want to look at it. But it says, whereas there is substantial evidence that both individual health and economic well-being are tied to educational outcomes, whereas there is ample evidence that community prosperity is related to the quality of education. Whereas when the state fails to adequately fund education, it puts an unfair responsibility on local taxpayers which cannot be met in low-wealth districts even when paying higher tax rates. Whereas the General Assembly has defined what a thorough education is by identifying educational standards, the standards used in the PSSA and Keystone Exams that all Pennsylvania students are expected to meet. And whereas the current school funding system in Pennsylvania results in grossly different amounts of money spent on children in different districts in violation of the equal protection provisions of the state constitution, with much less money spent on children in low-wealth districts even though their students have additional educational needs. So this would be our board voting on a resolution to support the plaintiffs in that case, which include parents of individual children, six school districts from around the state, including our neighbor William Penn, the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools, and the Pennsylvania NAACP State Conference. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the board, but I think you have material in your packet and.
That's one question, Larry. So this has been going on for 12 years, no more than 12 years. I'm assuming a ruling, a ruling is coming this year or
Maybe.
Maybe coming this year. After that, and it's going to a true judge, it's not a jury, obviously. Is that going to be a final rule or will it be appealed? And if it's appealed, what what's timeline for that? Or do you not, is it hard?
Good question, Steve, because you know, short answer on the appeal, most likely. You know, who knows how much longer they'll stretch it out for? I think sooner or later the legislature is going to have to do something. What that is remains to be seen. In other states that have had similar suits that have been resolved, generally it puts extra pressure on the legislature to come up with significant additional funding and formulas to distribute that, those funds. So we'll have to wait and see.
And that's, and that's assuming that's fine pay for the plaintiff. They would, they would then have to, it would put an onus on the legislature to make movement to fix the mess that.
And actually what's happened, I think, as a result of the extra pressure from this lawsuit in the last in the current budget and last year's state budget, they added a budget line for what's called level-up funding where they created a budget line, I think it was a hundred million dollars extra last year that went to, I believe it was the hundred most underfunded districts. So there has been a little bit of movement. And you know, the, you know, it's palpable, you know, you know, William Penn is what, three miles down the road from us and in so many ways, we, we take, we take it for granted that that the resources that we have in this district and what we're able to provide to our kids. And it's, it's not fair that, that students three miles down the road are using textbooks that are incredibly outdated, are in facilities that are in a much less state of repair, let alone newer facilities. So I hope that there, I hope there's a good outcome to this case.
Yeah, I think, you know, Pennsylvania has such disparities. And when I talk to my kids about advocating for public education, I think that's an excellent example that we could walk to schools that where the kids don't have the same opportunities. They don't have the same resources as we do. And that's a community that has taxed all it can and isn't getting more as a result. And the state has these mandates, we talk about them often in, you know, the range of requirements, add this, do this, certify that, report on this. But they also have these mandates on proficiency for student achievement. And when there's a correlation between funding and student achievement and the state isn't fulfilling its end of the bargain to support the districts where the communities can't put more in, there's real injustice there. I will, I mean, that is certainly a driving consideration for me in this. I will add that the fair funding formula, if that becomes an avenue to rectify the situation, is a formula that would benefit Haverford Township as well. That formula looks at growth in student enrollment and in students' educational needs. And because of our growing enrollment primarily, we would stand to see more funding from the state as part of that reconciliation. Two different reasons for supporting this, but I think both valid in the argument for Pennsylvania to more appropriately fund public education.
And currently we are funded, I think, by the state's 18%?
Eighteen percent.
We take?
Yeah, I just want to thank, thank you, Mr. Feinberg, for bringing this in front of the board because I think that a lot of folks just don't don't realize the way that our public schools are funded. And because of the state's outdated system in which they know that the, the money should go through the fair funding formula, which has been created, which has been shown to be more fair to the districts. They do not funnel all of the money that goes to schools through that funding formula. And so it is, they're instead using an outdated formula that, that used to work, that is based on old numbers, old data, and is not based on the current enrollment of students, the current need of students in schools. So it results in some schools that don't need the money, getting more money than they need from the state, and schools that do need the money to just educate their students, not getting enough. And so if we in Haverford Township can raise our voices and, and give, you know, really a platform to let folks know that this, that this type of unfair funding is currently happening, but there is a way that the state knows what to do to, to make it more fair. You know, I'm happy to have Haverford really promote this effort. So thank you for bringing it.
Can I give you a statistic? I just finished teaching a public finance class and one of my students just wrote a paper about education funding. St. Joe's is, our campus is half in Lower Marion and half in Philadelphia. So he did a case study of these two school districts. Funding for Philadelphia Public Schools is about sixteen thousand dollars per student. Funding, and this is, I think, this past academic year. Funding in Lower Marion is thirty-three thousand dollars, so more than twice as much per student. And these are communities that are literally right next to each other, right? So, you know, I, I knew that because I know a lot about education funding from being on the school board. But you know, as he was kind of working through this, this was like a real revelation for him that, and everyone in the class, he did a presentation and students were really shocked because I don't think they realized how inequitable the funding distribution is in our state. So it's, it's bad. So it's time. Yeah, thanks.
Any other discussion? All right, we will look forward to this coming back for a board vote to make it a formal resolution.
Great, thank you.
Item 12 is Public Comment, and we did have someone sign up. The Board Values Public Comment is an essential component of school governance that adds information for the deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before the board. It is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. It is not a question and answer period. While we conduct our business in open public meetings according to the Sunshine Act, it is not a meeting with the public. Our public comment is divided into two sections. This section is for comments on school-related topics that are not on tonight's agenda. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. And per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming your residency in Haverford Township. If you have any materials to distribute, please leave them on the end of the board table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes. And the person who signed up tonight is Alexis Pasternak.
Hi, thank you. Alexis Pasternak, Havertown.
Hi, thank you. Alexis Pasternak, Haver Town. Good evening, board, and Dr. Rishi. The Handmaid's Tale is a classic novel found in many high schools across the country, including Haverford High School. I've read the book, I've read the book myself. It's been a long time, but the subject matter is heavy, but overall, I, I don't have a problem with it. Uh, I think in the right context, the right setting, it's appropriate. What I'm here to speak about is the graphic novel version available in the high school library. I did provide you with some photocopies. I did take it out of the public library myself. Um, of course, context is important, and I would encourage you to read the book in its entirety yourselves. What you will see are images of rape, hanging, suicide ideation, groping, a less-than-positive visit to the O B G Y N. My personal favorite, a naked woman on a leash eating out of a bowl, and a woman with a gun sticking in her mouth, in her mouth. This is disgusting. I wasn't gonna get upset. It's disgusting. I'm gonna quote Ramona Besinger, a 23-year um, teacher in Providence School District. She teaches English. She says, "The written word is supposed to stimulate the reader to visualize and imagine the characters, places, and events about which the author writes." What this version has done is replaced the hard work of reading literature with a dumbed-down, semi-pornographic comic book. And really, it is just feeding students someone else's interpretation. This book is nothing more than a knockoff taking up space on our school shelves at our expense, our expense. And why? Because it's lauded by the American Library Association, the Library Journal, School Library Journal as well. Having a book like this in the high school is a choice. It's a choice. You don't have to have this book here, okay? It's not a requirement. There's nothing wrong with saying, "No." There's nothing wrong with it. It does not mean you are for censorship or for banning books, Mr. Feinberg. It's not. It's about appropriateness. I care about our kids. I went to school here. My son goes here. I want him to stay here. I want to stay here. But this, this creeps me out. This is icky. I will go through the proper channels to have this book evaluated further. I'm sure it will not be removed, because I'll be considered against diversity, equity, inclusion, and all of that crap. I think some of you needed to get down in the weeds and see what is actually available to the students, and then ask yourself, if literature like this is part of the hill you want to die on in the name of education? Please, think about what you're doing. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is for a report on executive session. We did not meet an executive session. The board did meet for an informational. Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I skipped board reports. Um, it was at the bottom of my page. I'll start with uh, Mr. Schwartz.
Your report.
All right, so um, on Sunday, Chestnut Wall is having their Chestnut Wall Chase. Um, it's adding to one of the many amazing fundraisers that the P T O sponsors there. Uh, the goal is to get a new swing set for the schools, and so swings are great. Um, it's useful for children of all ages, um, and all abilities. And so I am cheering them on. They are able to reach their goal and be able to get a new swing set um, at Chestnut Wall.
Discover Day is back, everyone. It was awesome. I took my kindergartner. She had an amazing time. She, Bug Man, wow, Bug Man. She touched all different kinds of bugs. She was very brave. She was like the first one with her hand in the air to volunteer. Um, I, I don't know exactly how many classrooms, but I would say at least 20 classrooms probably had different activities in them, all different activities. So many high school students volunteered, teachers volunteered, um, tons of kids going through the halls, lots of activities that you could take home to make later. Um, just a really fantastic day. I'm so glad it's back. It's so fun. Um, so thanks to everybody that was involved with that. Thanks to the high schoolers who helped with all the little ones who were there. Um, it was a really great day. I'm so glad. Um, and it's coming back again in November at its usual time. Um, so that's very exciting. Um, and tomorrow, Linwood is May Day. Um, thanks for bringing the Linwood kids. They were great. Um, tomorrow's May Day at Linwood, so um, we will be there mostly because I think the, the soft-serve ice cream truck will be there, which is gonna be very exciting. Um, but yeah, excited to go and, and celebrate a, a pretty fantastic school year. So, thank you.
I'll start down on the other end with Dr. Uh, Dr. Larson.
Dr. Sims. So I attended the, the D C I U um, board committee meeting on Wednesday, May 11th. Um, D C I U committee meetings are um, very rich discussions, because they wrap education, facilities, personnel, policy, everything you can imagine.
Excuse me, Kristen, could you lean into the mic a little better? Because I'm gonna be 70 soon, and I can't hear you.
Understood. Is that better? Okay. Um, so at this board committee meeting for D C I U last Wednesday, um, we discussed the, the project, the construction planning um, for the Delaware County Technical High School at Fulcroft. Um, right now, the board is looking at different approaches to um, to procurement for this project. We're leaning toward a hybrid approach, because that would allow um, us to get, um, to look at a variety of methods that allow us to get the best value for D C I U, um, as we're working on that construction project. Um, in terms of financing that project, um, we also reviewed different findings, financing objects, but, um, sorry, options, but those are in flux because of interest rates. Um, so again, these are ongoing discussions. We're hoping to have some of this um, nailed down a little bit later in the summer. Um, D C I U is also working on an HVAC update project. They're looking at all their sites, um, Aston Fulcroft, um, Marple, and Morton, um, with a range of different needs, so hopefully those will be addressed. Um, the Personnel Committee um, reported out that the staff vaccination rate is um, is great. I mean, the majority now of I U employees and C T E employees are fully vaccinated. They do have a mandate there that employees be vaccinated. Um, so that's great news. Um, we're also doing policy work, um, just like we do here in Haverford. Um, the policy that is currently in front of the board is the acceptable use of internet, computers, and network resources. They're taking um, a whole slew of technology-related policies and rolling them into one and making sure they're updated with current um, P S B A recommendations and in line with um, you know, what council requires. Um, also some great news, um, the D C I U IT Repair Shop, which came online earlier this year, they are looking to bring on nine student interns um, for a summer, full-time summer internship that would pay twenty dollars an hour. Um, I hope maybe we can have Haverford students take advantage of this. It's just so exciting to hear that, you know, students will be doing this work, getting that hands-on experience. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, I was just gonna say, it's been a little bit of a busy week at Linwood. We had the art show. I was um, lucky enough to be able to chaperone the second grade field trip this weekend. Like Dr. Crispin mentioned, we have May Day at Linwood tomorrow, and so I will be there at the raffle table, the candy, the wheel of candy, and at the entrance table for a little bit. Um, and I would, if I could just make a plug, it startled me, and I guess I forget, because I have older boys um, who are out of Linwood, but with my younger son, so many people, um, and I'm sure that other elementary schools are seeing the same thing, there's these time-honored events and traditions at all of our elementary schools. And since they've been gone for two years with the pandemic, a lot of people have no idea what they are. And I know we've struggled to get some volunteers for May Day, so um, please volunteer with your P T O and keep your, at your elementary school, no matter which one it is. There's wonderful traditions that make each of our schools unique, um, and it's exciting for the children to have them back. I know it's the first one. I couldn't believe it when he said he's never been to, I mean, he's been to May Day with his older brothers, but um, uh, so to please help out your P T Os and volunteer for whatever your school has. Um, we're excited to have it tomorrow.
Your report.
All right, Mr. Feinberg.
State Legislature has been in recess due to the primary election. Both the House and the Senate are due back on the 23rd. Um, significantly, for the first time in 30 years, the Pennsylvania House of Representatives uh, did pass the voucher bill. It's House Bill 2169. Uh, it was a close vote, and that will be uh, moving on to the Senate. Uh, I'm sure that the governor would veto it if it passed in the Senate, uh, but uh, we're following that one closely, and we'll keep you up to date.
All right, thank you. Um, since the last board meeting, I've attended a couple of P S B A and, and local functions. Um, at the P S B A Monthly Leadership Zoom, they spoke about Pennsylvania, um, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association has withdrawn from the National School Boards Association, and it with 22 states, or 22 states in total, um, have formed a new consortium of state school board associations that is in the works. Um, and Pennsylvania is looking once again to have, uh, that is a new association of states that will provide um, governance and uh, training, best practices, have conventions and activities to support and advocate for public education, so we can, um, it sounds like they've made a lot of progress already on, on forming that new COSBA group. Um, and we should look forward to hearing about its more formal, um, kind of, uh, like leadership coming together and, and the governance structure that it sets up, um, and then start looking for some activities that uh, Pennsylvania school districts could participate in. Um, there was also a meeting of the Delaware, Delaware County Legislative Council, and um, one of the things that's happening tomorrow, I think several of us and Dr. Rishi are going to the Legislative Breakfast, um, again, to be held in person for the first time in a couple of years, so like a breakfast with, like a served breakfast. Um, and it will feature uh, the discussion on mental health in schools, um, and will have uh, representatives from state government, um, some local uh, districts who are talking about um, things happening in their districts with mental health programs. Um, and Mr. Feinberg's gonna be talking about charter reform, um, so it should be a good event and, and opportunity for the districts to uh, connect with our local legislature, to tell them some of the challenges that we're dealing with, um, and you hear about some of the ideas that hopefully will be helping schools. Um, and then there was another meeting of the P S B A school directors, um, and it featured their 2022 State of Education Report, um, that is uh, based on surveys of districts across Pennsylvania, as well as P D E and um, U S Department of Education funding, or um, surveys and, and data, um, and looking at some of the trends affecting schools. A lot of it is probably not a surprise at this point in the pandemic that there are challenges with staffing shortages and um, inadequate and changing guidance from, from um, like the health departments and, and CDC on managing COVID, um, and new challenges around budgets and, and um, the pension crisis is one that got a particular note of um, the amount of funding that we are required to contribute to the um, the pensions that need to come from our budgets each year. So um, lots of, lots of topics that are being battled, not just here in our district, but across the state, and so it's always good to get those updates. Um, and uh, I also was just gonna say that um, I am looking forward to some of these end-of-year activities. I think next week, um, I have a chance to go to two activities at the high school, um, the Parade of Champions. I also had been going to some track meets and saw some of the performances that Mia, you talked about. I saw Aubrey's um, record-setting hurdles, and I saw some super-fast miles and great teamwork on relays. Um, lots of fun to go and cheer on the Fords and whatever venue. Um, and there's also a um, uh, kind of a game of life that's gonna happen to teach some real-life budgeting skills, and I hope to help out at that one next week, too. And I think I and, and the rest of the board will have some opportunities at some of these year-end celebrations for the elementary schools. Um, we'll look forward to getting those on the calendar, and then we'll all be looking forward to graduation not that far away. Um, so with that, now I can say that um, my report on the, the executive session was that we did not have an executive session, but the board did meet for an information session to learn more about our food services program. The next regular public board meeting will be on uh, June 2nd, 2022, at 7:30 in the Haverford Middle School. We're going to once again move, move locations. You gotta keep up with where we'll be. Um, that is because we will be honoring our retirees and have a bigger group that night. Um, as noted earlier in the meeting, before the next regular public board meeting, we are going to host a special board meeting um, with the vote on the change to the Health and Safety Plan, and that will be Tuesday, May 24th, at 6:30 here in this room. And with that, I welcome a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.